Okay, so it's two minutes past seven, let's start and we'll take account of anybody who joins if they do separately. So, Debra and I have discussed that if people want to speak, if you can please indicate, but what I'll do is I'll go round to make sure that everybody who wants to speak has an opportunity. So I'll probably go around in alphabetical order, but make it very plain if you're not being asked to speak when you want to speak. So, but hopefully this meeting will go as seamlessly as the previous one. And I think the other thing was, Debra, have you managed, you still haven't managed to mute people or unmute them?
I have just found the button, but I didn't want to click it because it would mute you.
Okay, well, that might be a welcome event, but I'd better get on and read the preamble. So I need to, I need to welcome everybody to announce the meeting is being recorded. And I'm not sure if we're worried about whether anyone else intends to record the meeting, but it says to ask, do I need to ask?
I think the main thing also is to, if anybody objects to being recorded.
Does anybody, well, we can't object, but does any member of the public, the only member of the public I can see is Stephen Walsh, he's shaking his head. Okay, will you let us know if other members, oh, and Alison Hayes, whom I can't see, and her name isn't up here now, so.
She is, she is still attending, she's just, video and microphone are turned off.
And is there anybody else who's attending from members of the public at the moment?
Sarah Beckett has just joined us.
Okay.
And I think that she will be without video again as before.
Okay, well, welcome, members of the public, and you'll have your opportunity to speak in under item six. Do we have any apologies for absence, please?
No, none.
Okay. Item three, declaration of members' interest to remind councillors of the need to keep up to date their register of members' interests and to consider any requests received for members' dispensation. Does anybody want to request a dispensation? Nope. Okay, so let's move on to item four, to receive the minutes of the town council meeting held on the 24th of February, which must have been our last proper meeting, and any matters arising. So I'll go through them page by page, it was quite a long meeting, page one, page two, page three, page four, page five, page six, page seven, page eight, and page nine. No comments from anybody. Okay, so I'll sign those, but how am I signing them, Debra? Can't sign them.
No, you can't sign them at this meeting. What we'll do is, once these have been approved by the council, we will post them to you. You can sign a hard copy and post them back.
Okay, so could somebody propose that we accept those minutes? Chris O'Neill, do we have a second, or the deputy mayor, all those in favour? Can you put your hands up close to the screen because Debra's got to count everybody?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thank you.
Anybody who objects, well, that's a majority anyway, okay, thank you very much. So we'll go through them for matters arising, page one, page two, page three, page four, page five, page six, page seven, page eight, page nine. Okay, no matters arising, so that was easy. Right, thank you. Now we need to move on to the minutes, to receive and consider any recommendations from the minutes of the virtual meetings held on the 30th of March and the 6th of April. We're just considering the recommendations then, Debra?
Yes.
So I'm not signing these?
But you also really have to approve the minutes.
Okay, all right, so we'll go through them page by page. The first minutes are the minutes of the meeting of the 30th of March, our first virtual meeting. So we're doing this for accuracy, page one, page two, page three, page four. I think we, actually, I think we approved these at the second meeting, didn't we?
Well, well, yes, but it's, you know, a good idea just to formally approve them at this meeting.
Do we have a proposer and a second for those minutes? And councillor Kirk, all those in favour, put your hands close to the screen. Okay, anybody, okay, so that's a majority, anybody not want to approve them? No, that seems fine, thank you. We'll go through them for matters arising. Page one, page two, page three, page four. Okay, no matter arising, thank you, so we'll move swiftly on to the minutes.
Sorry, just confirming that the recommendations and that have been formally adopted by the council.
Okay, I think we, do we not do that then? Okay.
Well, just confirming that.
Okay, fine. Right, moving on to these other minutes that we haven't actually been through before. So this is the second virtual meeting we had on the 6th of April. There's a, I'll highlight the recommendations as a recommendation, that was just about the minutes, page one, page two, there's another recommendation about the electric agendas, electronic agendas, that's page two, and page three, no recommendations. Are people happy to approve those minutes for accuracy? Yes, councillor Neil again, a second, councillor.
I will.
Councillor Holbert second.
All right, all those in favour? Super, thank you, anybody against? No, okay, so those are approved for accuracy. Going through them for matters arising, page one, page two. Can I just ask, Debra, did it, is, I know we have one or two people who don't want the electronic agendas, but most of the councillors are having electronic agendas, is that right?
That's correct, yes, we're only posting three agendas.
Okay, so we are being more eco-friendly than we were, which I'm sure we're all positive about. The update on the weather be crossing, we'll come to that later. So on page three, hanging baskets. People have seen that we're not having hanging baskets this year and anything, in case, unless anything changes. Okay, I did, everybody happy with those, any matters arising, page three? Okay, thank you. All right, so those are all minutes. Now we go on to public participation, we have three members of the public. Would any of the three members of the public like to participate? I can only see, you know, Stephen Walsh, Alison Hayes' participation. I think it's muted, okay, okay, so no members of the public, thank you for attending anyway. Right, on to the committee minutes, development and planning, deputy mayor.
Yes, the development and planning meeting held on the 16th of March 2020. The main matter that was.
Sorry, the 2nd of March, I think we have to go through too.
Do we?
Yeah.
Well, in that case, we'll go to the 2nd of March first. So, the meeting of the 2nd of March 2020, I seek your adoption of.
You're presenting the minutes and you'd like us to adopt them?
Absolutely right.
Just go through the recommendations, if there are any.
On that occasion, there are no recommendations to put before you. And on the second agenda, the 16th of March, there was one item that was not resolved, that I wanted to bring back in front of you, which was D200323, which was air B and B, which I've taken up with West Suffolk Council, but as of, as of today's date, we do not have any policy.
I think we can't really do that, councillor Lay, I mean, I'm sure people have, would like to hear about it, but we can't, we're just really approving the minutes and the recommendations.
Well, I present the minutes for your approval of the meeting we had on the 16th of March 2020.
Okay, we've got a proposer, councillor Neil, a second for both of those, yes, councillor Caesar, all those in favour? Please put your hand up close to the screen. It looks of everybody, yeah, everybody unanimous, thank you. Can we move on to the leisure services, please? Councillor Duff.
Yeah, thank you. So if, this is for the leisure services committee meeting held on the 2nd of March 2020. We can go through for accuracy and matters arising. Page one, page two, page three.
Sorry, we're just, we're just really going through, you're presenting them and we only need to point out with any recommendations?
Oh, there's one recommendation for a crossing at the Severals. I don't think that was resolved. Page.
It's on page three.
Yeah, page three.
There's also one for Memorial Gardens on page three.
The water feature was the, oh no, the supply and installation of the canopy. Or the water feature.
Yeah.
The canopy.
Yes.
Yeah. So they're not involved.
No, they're recommendations, so are people that's on page three, are people happy to accept those recommendations? Yeah, okay. We've got councillor Border and councillor Neil, are all those in favour of accepting those minutes? Yep, thank you very much. Okay, moving swiftly on, community services, councillor Kirby, I can't see him, is he in the meeting?
No.
No, okay, well, then I'll present these minutes. I'm going to present the community services committee meeting held on the 9th of March and ask for their adoption. No resolutions on page one or page two. Page three, oh, there is one on page three, recommendation that town council continues to work within the vision and request an increase in representation of one to four members on the vision steering group. Page four, no recommendations, page five, no recommendations. So we'd like to propose and second those minutes.
I'll propose or second.
Okay, councillor Caesar, councillor Kirk, okay, all those in favour?
Yes.
Okay, anybody not in favour? No, okay, now we move on to finance and policy. Councillor Drummond.
Yep, hi, I was just muting myself. I had pleasure in presenting the minutes of finance and policy held on Monday, the 16th of March, and seek their adoption, thank you.
Are there any recommendations, do you want to go through them?
Yes, we have the recommendation on page two, which is that we allocate £10,000 towards the coronavirus support fund from General Reserve. And we also have the general power of competence, which is actually on the agenda as item eight tonight anyway.
Okay, so do we have a proposer and a second for those minutes?
I'll propose.
Councillor Drummond. Oh, okay, councillor Duff, all those in favour? Okay, that's, yep, everyone, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So then we're moving on to item eight, which is the general power of competence, which I'd like to propose. We've already been through this. Does anyone want to discuss it, or shall we just proceed?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favour of adopting the general power of competence?
Yes.
Okay, anybody not in favour? Okay, no, that's fine, great. Item nine, coronavirus response. Well, it's a different world when we, from when we had our last meeting. So shall we go to those, we need to receive and note the minutes. Councillor Jeffries, I think perhaps you're the chair of this group, you'll do that.
Yeah, I'm pleased to present the notes of the coronavirus response steering group meeting held on Tuesday, the 31st of March, Friday, the 3rd of April, and Tuesday, the 7th of April.
And Tuesday, the 14th.
And Tuesday, the 14th of April, we've been busy, haven't we?
We have.
Okay, does anybody want to ask any questions about those, or are people happy with them? There's a happy, can, or Neil, yes, anybody, okay, so we've got a, councillor Neil, who's going to second those?
Second.
Councillor Caesar, okay, all those in favour of adopting them?
I'm just audio, so yes.
All right.
Are you in favour of them, Peter?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, thank you.
Right, now we need to move on to item 11, finance. Cathy, are you going to take us through these?
Well, you've missed item 10.
Oh, have I, I'm sorry. Oh, coronavirus financial updates, sorry. Is that that printout?
Yeah, this is two items, one of them should be, there's a, there's a brief report that I've written, and then there's the the spreadsheet showing the cost breakdown.
Right.
So, so the report is called coronavirus future funding requirements and grant opportunities. And one of them in particular is looking at how we might, how we can still work with the community, but support them without having to receive cash as a payment. And I've sort of set out a proposal where the council potentially could act as a bank, which obviously would involve an element of risk, because for many of the users, it would not be possible to reimburse the council for their shopping until they could get to a bank themselves to get cash out. So it may be necessary to hold on to this debt for some considerable time. And there may be some who could have afforded to pay at the time of ordering, but whose circumstances change as time goes on. And that circumstance, the loan would, could be considered, could be converted to a grant. There could be a considerable amount of work involved in keeping good records and developing relationships with those who use the scheme. Because my concern is a lot of people of that particular generation, they, they hate owing money, so we would, we would need to have a good relationship with them. And hopefully, if we were agreed to consider the principle of it, because obviously we'd have to look into a lot of detail before, you know, committing properly to it. But hopefully, there wouldn't be very many people who would fall into the category who wouldn't be able to, to pay for their shopping. I think there's quite a lot of people out there at the moment who could pay by card. But, you know, unless everybody wants to use the box scheme, it's the only way they can pay for supermarkets online if they can't, if they, particularly if they can't get in on the click and collect or, or to order their shopping online. So it's just about making it easier for volunteers in particular, it reduces the risk for volunteers, it reduces the risk for our residents if we can have some kind of a scheme whereby we act as the bank. But I'm working, I've been working with John Gilbert from the Racing Centre, because they might be able to consider doing that, but I haven't had a chance to catch up on him with, with him, whether or not that was an option for them. But it was, whether or not was something that, in principle, the council was willing to consider. The next part of the, the report was about future funding requirements. And, you know, your note from the spreadsheet, you know, we have already allocated £10,000 towards sort of unbudgeted expenses relating to dealing with the coronavirus situation. It's sort of all clearly set out there. But we've, we've now spent £7,648 of the £10,000 allowance. We don't know what other expenses might be coming down the line. Hopefully, most of what we need to spend has now been spent. I mean, nobody's working overtime hours now, for example, and, you know, the website is now up and running, the database is working well, the helpline is working well, but there will be sort of ongoing costs, because for every individual we have working on the helpline, there is a monthly fee of, I think it's £5.50 per, it's called a seat, so per seat. So we've probably got sort of 10 more or more seats additional to what we would normally have if we were not functioning normally from the office and not running a helpline. So, you know, there will be ongoing costs and, you know, IT support and various other things, but it's, it's hard to know at this stage how much more extra out-of-pocket expenses we might have. So, I mean, it's just, I've just suggested to councillors that we look at the possibility of perhaps allocating the remaining £5,000 to out-of-pocket expenses. And then also possibly looking at whether or not we might want to, at some point in the future, look at perhaps allocating some more money to grant funding, depending on what's going on in the community and, and our own financial situation, which I have noted that the local government association has written to the, the government outlining the concerns and issues faced by local authorities at the moment, where they are suggesting that, you know, with their loss of income, they will be facing quite dire financial circumstances themselves. So I've been discussing, in discussion with the finance officer about reviewing, you know, the worst case scenario would be that the local authority with Suffolk Council would be unable to pay us to make their first precept payment if they didn't have the, the financial reserves to do that. So normally, we would receive precept and two instalments, one at the end of this month and one six months down the line. But that's predicated on South Norfolk Council, West Suffolk Council, sorry, having collected that money from taxpayers. I mean, normally, they would have enough money in reserve to be able to afford to do that. And then we'd collect, they would then collect the money back from council taxpayers throughout the year. But they may not be in a suitable position to be able to do that. So the finance officer and I are going to have a look at what, how we would manage if, if we weren't able to receive precept and the usual, unusual timetable. We're also going to review and see what income we've lost, because all of our bookings and most of the events have been cancelled. But we will bring that to the next meeting of council in two weeks' time.
Okay, so there's a fair bit there, I'm just going to make a few comments and then I'll go round and everybody can have their say. I personally think that we shouldn't become a bank and that we should continue to pursue as the acting town council manager is this idea of the Racing Centre and John Gilbert coming up with an idea if they're in the odd case. And we need to be very careful. I actually did have a call on the helpline this afternoon that when I talked to Tom Kirby about, and actually, I think councillor Kirk knows about, oh, hello, Tom Kirby, you're here? Hello, we are, we're just, I was just going to mention in relation, we're on item 10.
I don't know what happened there, I missed stuff.
Anyway, we're on item 10, future funding, I'm not in favour of the town council becoming a bank. I'm in favour of perhaps of the race, following up on the Racing Centre thing. And I was going to mention that you and I, and I understand councillor Kirk, had a bit of an experience with somebody today who potentially might be somebody who's, perhaps, we might be concerned about, I think, not to put too fine a point on it, but there will be one or two occasions potentially when there are issues. It's extremely alarming to think that we may not get our precept, particularly in light of the fact that we have had to, we've had to cancel all our events, so we're not getting any income with all of that. Going on to the second page, so, I mean, we do have to be very careful with all of this. The Newmarket Festival, as we know, have generously supporting things. And we need to say, well, Stephen Walsh is here, since he is, works with the Gridley business, and everybody's extremely grateful to the Gridley Charitable Trust for the generosity shown towards the people of Newmarket, so perhaps you could convey the thanks for that. Because as you'll see on the last page, the Gridley Charitable Trust have donated £50,000 to the Newmarket Festival, so in order to support the work of the community, so there is, there are funds there. And then just the last thing I want to say is that, yes, we have spent considerable monies getting ourselves in the position we are to run an effective helpline, which there are thanks due to countless people, some of whom know who they are and some of whom are on this call and many others aren't, but. So, so we are up and running, it has cost a certain amount of money. But hopefully, we're doing good things for our community, which has been the intention all along. Right, so if I try and, I think it might be easier, if you don't mind, just to go round in, in picture form. And the first person I can see is councillor Yarrow, would you like to say something? And I'll go round everybody.
Kevin, you need to unmute yourself, hang on, I'll unmute you, here we go. Start again.
I'm not particularly well informed, I have to confess, over the finances. But I can see that there are other sources of revenue, which, from the Suffolk County, West Suffolk County Council and District Council. But I do think that we do need to have funds available for our community, because it's quite apparent, isn't it, on the helpline, that there are people in considerable need. I think that's what I have to say, really.
Yes, if I could just add, remember, we are the, the immediate level. On the helpline, there are people who call in, who should be calling Suffolk County Council or West Suffolk on that helpline too. So we, there are other areas, but your point's taken. Right, now moving, the next person is councillor Lay, I'm sorry, I'm just going round in the way I can see things on my screen.
Rachel, I haven't got a great deal to say on this, except that if money, if there is any possibility that money will be tight and that we, there is any possibility that we may not get paid from West Suffolk, then I think as far as being a bank is concerned, we should be cautious.
Okay, thank you, the next person is councillor Drummond.
Yes, so my observation would be, it's a little bit like a donut. So Newmarket Town Council has its own residence, which, if you like, are the centre of the donut. And we've actually put some money aside to help them. But the other organisations that have stepped in, like the festival and Eunice or the Gridley Charitable Trust, if you like, they're on the outside of that circle, serving some of the villages that see Newmarket as its service centre. So I think what's actually been put together is very good. And, you know, there's nowhere else really in Suffolk or, you know, looking more granular at West Suffolk that's doing this. So I think it's, it's absolutely fantastic, well done, everybody.
Councillor Jeffries, if I, it might be easier if I just say, I'm going to go councillor Jeffries, councillor Caesar, councillor Border, councillor Neil, councillor Kirk, councillor Duff, councillor Fitzgerald, councillor Kirby, that's the way you come up on my screen. So, oh, it's all changed all of a sudden. It's back, okay, councillor Jeffries.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I, I think the response of Newmarket Town Council has been brilliant in that we've got the helpline up and running. Whenever I talk to people who phone the helpline, they're very grateful and, and hats off to, particularly to the people who are doing the coordinating, Tom Kirby and Ian Kirk, who've put so much time in. And thank you, Andrew, for helping out with that. I, I think the, the problem of payment, particularly for the Tesco boxes, is an issue we've discussed on the steering group without resolution at the moment. I think that we do have to stand in. Um I think that we do have to stand in, as I last resort, if we can get the racing centre to operate um the payments, uh that would be a preferable solution. But in the end, it wouldn't be very different to us um acting or or calling on the people to pay their at their council tax uh it when it comes to reimbursement of any loans that we might give in order to make certain that those Tesco boxes go forward. And I I believe that that with the new leaflet, people, more people are looking to use those boxes, though um Ian and Tom may may be able to confirm that. I do think that we should consider um allocating a further sum of five thousand pounds for our operational costs, uh as long as Cathy can find somewhere for it to come from. Um and and clearly that that's important. But I would like to propose at this stage, just to put it on the table, that we do allocate a further sum of five thousand pounds uh for operational costs.
Do we know what operational costs are, though?
Well, we've got the list, haven't we? We've got the the spreadsheet with our costs of seven thousand six hundred and forty eight pounds twenty. Um and as uh the town council manager was explaining, there are ongoing costs associated with using the the software for answering the phones, the helpline. Um I don't want to like things to end or or be difficult because we haven't got the funding. It would be great if we don't have to use the five thousand pounds, but it's contingency fund so that we can make certain we can operate the helpline as efficiently as we have done so far.
So that would mean we'd have seven thousand three hundred approximately.
Oh, sorry, if I just explain, we've got, we've already got ten thousand pounds allocated. And of that, we've spent the seven thousand four hundred and sixty eight. Um, so the suggestion is that we allocate another five thousand pounds so that, as as councillor Jeffries has suggested, that, you know, we we don't have to worry about whether or not we can afford to continue to to operate. That five thousand pound would come from the original twenty thousand. So you've got the ten thousand from reserves and the ten thousand that was recommended um from um underspend in the in the previous financial year, the one that finished at the thirty first of March. So that's ten, that's twenty thousand pounds in total. Five thousand pounds we've we've granted as a hardship fund, which um should should be on its way to the Newmarket Festival for their, for them to distribute now. And then and then ten thousand pounds is already allocated to our operational costs. And we were suggesting that the remaining five thousand pounds also be allocated to that. And that we potentially look at future funding opportunities out of the current financial financial year. But obviously, we we need to have set out a much clearer financial picture so councillors can make an informed decision.
Uh councillor Caesar.
Yeah, I I agree with councillor Jeffries. Um I think, I don't think we should become a bank yet, but I do think we should at least um get the capability of becoming one. Um, you know, having a account set up, um having the online banking in place, um ready for, if we do need to suddenly step in. Um, also, I think this is a national crisis and, yes, we might not get a precept. And we do have general reserve and, you know, we shouldn't kind of expect to get through this national crisis with that precept and with that general reserve intact or having contributed to that this year. I mean, this is, this is why you have those for these times of crisis. So um, you know, I don't think we should kind of drag our feet when it comes to allocating money for this.
Okay, councillor Border, you're next.
Um, this, um, yeah, I mean, we probably don't need to be a bank yet. Um and there's also the case that there is the food bank for the people who are needy. Uh and obviously, there's the five thousand that's gone to the festival, there's a hardship fund that that should do, might do for now. So um obviously, it's it's an option to keep to consider in the future, but perhaps not to do now. But yeah, I think we do need to keep to top up the funds available for now, the the five thousand pounds that Mick Jeffries suggested, so that, you know, we do have the op- the capability of carrying on operating as we are at the moment. Because, you know, it's, it 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 may be cheap, but it's not free.
Okay, councillor Neil.
Um, I would like to second councillor Jeffries' proposal for the five thousand pounds. And I would like to say, let's hope we don't have to become a bank. But if that's what it takes, we will have to become one in the future, and I'm all for that if we need to. And um I concur with what councillor Caesar said about general reserves are for these sorts of situations that we hope we'd we'd never have to use.
Okay, uh councillor Kirk, I'm, I think people did move around, so I'm I'm trying to keep in the same order, but yeah, councillor Kirk.
Yeah, I I really agree with the the previous three speakers. But the, I think one thing is essential, uh is that we do need to have a mechanism for supporting people who can't afford to pay. Um and how we resolve that, I think, is something, is a matter of some urgency. Maybe it's something through Newmarket Festival rather than directly as the town council acting as a bank. Um and just on the the allocation of new funds, I think two thousand five hundred is too tight and it would be as a balance currently. And it'd be awful if we couldn't continue some initiative because we had to wait for the next town council meeting to allocate additional funds. So I'm in favour of an additional five thousand.
Okay.
No, sorry, Rachel, can I just jump in here and just clarify a point and sort of um just, it's in regard to the the bank and that we're not, it's not set out to support those people who can't pay now, people who are in hardship. That's what the food bank is for, and the day centre and the hardship fund that we've allocated to Newmarket Festival. The bank is 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 to take away the need for for volunteers um to be put at risk by having to handle cash um and and to sort of take out that whole kind of money transaction to 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 make payment easier when we're helping people getting shopping and some and possibly prescriptions as well, depending on the circumstances. So I just, I just sort of clarify that point.
And but we're still waiting to hear if if the racing centre can do it, because they actually have the capability for taking cash evidently, which we don't at this point. But so we may want to decide, if they can't come up with something, we'll do it.
Well, we we could take cash, but it's the people who've got the cash who are self-isolating or who can't get to the bank to get their cash out that we that we would just be assisting through this through this time period until they could do that. Or the racing centre, whichever organisation, but yeah, but we are waiting to hear from them, yeah.
Yeah, uh, I don't know who I said next, was it you councillor Death? You are next in my pictures right now.
Okay, thank you. Um I I agree that we should set aside a further five thousand pounds into this fund. But I also think that we do need to be utilising the festival a lot more than we are. They have currently got fifty seven thousand pounds set aside um to help people that are in need. They've also got several organisations and restaurants and groups providing hot meals to people that are in desperate need, including children's meals as well. They're very keen to keep it within the local area. Um and I know that some committee members are going out to some of the villages in which they live to see if there's need out there as well. Um, so whilst, yes, I do think that we need to set aside more money so that we're not caught between a rock and a hard place, we should, when we get the calls in from people that are very vulnerable. And I certainly found that I had two very vulnerable people today, and I think it's probably going to get worse as time goes on, that rather than worrying about the money coming from our funds, we do need to be going to the festival and asking them to assist with this.
And there's also West Suffolk, we mustn't forget them. Um councillor Fitzgerald. You're muted. You're muted. Yeah. I hear you.
Apologies.
Okay.
Um, I agree with uh further five thousand um funding. Um I won't repeat everything that's been said. Um I agree with the other councillors.
Okay, thank you. Uh councillor Bowen.
Hi, um, uh, I agree with the five thousand to set aside, but it's very extraordinary circumstances, obviously. And um it's not, it's not every year that we have a pandemic. Um regarding the uh bank uh for the purpose of making it safer for the exchange of cash, I was agreeing with what everyone else was saying. And uh that that it's, should be there for the vulnerable. I mean, we should be prepared to put it there um if we need to. But if it's regarding, uh if it's actually regarding uh volunteers exchanging cash with the people they help, that changes everything. Um so, sorry, I think, and in that case, uh I think it's best if we take whichever step we can, we can get as done uh done quickly. Whichever step takes the shortest amount of time, because uh a lot of the people that are using the helpline are obviously elderly and vulnerable and they have cash instead of. And it's quite dangerous, obviously, because the virus passes through cash. So we should do whichever course of action that takes the shortest amount of time to approach the festival if that's quicker. Yeah, that's my contribution.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, councillor Kirby, I believe you're, oh, well, actually, Peter Holbert, councillor Holbert. So sorry, shall we?
Thank you very much. I mean, I believe it, obviously, as time goes on, people find it harder and far harder. Because usually then you find that they've they've got rid of home of what money they've had and everything. And as it goes on, it'll be harder for them. I say this, I mean, at the moment, all we've got is roughly about two and a half thousand left out of that ten thousand. But that's going to go nowhere. So therefore, obviously, I do suggest, excuse me, that we do have the other five thousand to be put in a pot to help the peoples, especially the people that are disabled and everything like that. Thank you very much.
Um, I I, yeah, I think perhaps that, um councillor Holbert, that's not what the five thousand is being allocated for. I think we've sent five thousand over to the festival, which has fortunately now got quite a bit. And our five thousand was for the costs of um running things in the meantime. But anyway, um just to clarify that, councillor Kirby.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I agree with the five thousand, because obviously, you know, what we've set up at the moment is working and people appreciate it. So it'd be a shame to start to lose what we have built up and the reputation we've built up with people that actually they ring the council and the council actually are helping them out and the volunteers are helping them out. Um so I think, you know, everybody has to be congratulated on that. In terms of a bank, I think we have to, if Newmarket Festival have taken five thousand pounds of our money on board and that's to be used as a hardship fund, then any anything that we receive or any person that receives struggling for payment, we should be looking at the festival to help them out. I don't think at the moment we need to set ourselves up as a bank. We've put money aside, the festival will have a a a large amount in their pot. Um, we should be directing those sort of people towards the festival to take some of that funding, if if they, if they meet the criteria. Just as we've learned today, myself being and the mayor, there is, you know, there's people out there that will quite happily try and fleece the system a little bit. Um so we, you know, we have to be careful how we deal with this. And if it, if they're directed to the festival, then they've got a pot of money there and then let's let's utilise them.
I, Tom, I I just think that Newmarket Festival is looking to fund organisations that will, that will support people in the community, such as the Day Centre and the Food Bank and and, you know, the Voluntary Network. Um but it's those people that, um so that, you know, for example, the Day Centre will only, um, you know, their their priority is people over sixty five. They have, under these circumstances, changed the remit to people over fifty. But it's it's the people who fall uh outside of that bracket, you know, then then they're not necessarily, usually a family that's entitled to free school meals. So they're not necessarily going to be supported by by the churches together. Um and, you know, the food bank might be an option for perhaps, you know, one a week or or whatever. But it's just, you know, it's just, it's the people that fall outside of that and finding an organisation that might be able to support them. So, I mean, I'll continue talking to Racing Welfare, but um I think it would be a shame if we if if we close down the opportunity to consider it in the future if it became necessary now. I think it would be perhaps best, you know, can we just leave the option open so that, you know, we can come back and revisit it if it becomes necessary?
So I I'll try and sum up. It sounds as if uh there's, the vast majority would like to um allocate five thousand pounds to our um running costs for the uh for the coronavirus response. Um. And so that's one, so perhaps we'll vote on that. So all those in favour of contributing five thousand to the coronavirus response running costs scenario? Yeah, that.
Yeah. Yes, thank you, Peter.
Yes. Um and then the other bit slightly more complicated, um, I mean.
Can I, can I suggest something for councillors to vote on?
Yes.
And and that would be that um that the option of acting as a bank be something um that we leave that option open, uh subject to further information and and, you know, to re- resuggest it if it becomes necessary in the future.
Whilst pursuing the other options of the racing central, whatever, that sounds roughly what everybody seems to think. Does anybody, put your hand up if you object to that? No, okay, so I think, um, yes, so shall we just, we'll vote on that. Sounds like everybody feels that's an appropriate way forward. Anybody who doesn't feel that's an appropriate way forward? No, okay, all right. Thank you. Uh that's a very helpful uh discussion and um I I think we've all felt, those of us who've been, I mean, everybody's been involved. And I think uh every, almost without exception, everybody has been extremely nice and it's a very positive situation. Um and um, you know, long may it continue. It's it's simple that the the town council and everybody's been able to get together and be so functional so quickly. So shall we then move on to the more day to day and then item eleven, finance? Uh Cathy, are you able to take us through anything that people's attention should be drawn to, please?
Yeah, okay, so um I would just point out that these are reports that you've got still in draft. We haven't had the end of year, we haven't had the end of month. And um got first of all in your pack, you've got the income and expenditure reports. Um I'm just looking down to see, and in the current month, which was month twelve, we're talking about March, of anything that I really need to point out to you, please shout out if there's anything that I miss. I'm going down the first page on finance and policy. You can see that we paid the Citizens Advice Bureau grant in this month of three thousand pounds. Um, there was a five hundred pound grant, which was our bid sponsorship um for the awards that they were doing. Agreed. Um, the marketing of three nine three, that was um for the bombing exhibition. It was for um all the publicity for that, um which will come through. If you can see further down there, I've started a new code, four one one five, just down at the bottom of page one, which was for the coronavirus response costs. Um, and that was what we started in March. Obviously, when we get year end, there's more ongoing costs. Your sheet that you are just, we're just looking at a bit earlier, the breakdown is much more up to date, although there are some things that I've actually posted um today as well. So it's an ongoing thing, it's a moving piece, really, that. Um, Yellow Brick Road, you can see there, this is, we've got the service level, quarter four service level agreement through. So I've managed to pay that um within the right uh month, so that's great. We've got all of those figures on there, you can see that's monitored. Um, going on to page three, uh again, there are, most of those larger costs are the different breakdowns for the service level agreement for quarter four. Um. Mind to look and see what, um, down at the bottom, under cemeteries, we've got repairs and maintenance. And to look and see what, down at the bottom, under cemeteries, we've got repairs and maintenance grounds. There's nearly one and a half thousand pounds, sorry, yes, one and a half thousand pounds there. And that was for extra costs that we were charged for burial rings. They're very expensive. And I think we had some for earlier on in the year and that's when they tried to open up a grave and it's not deep enough to put the second coffin in. They have to use these burial rings, which we have to pay on top of our service level agreement, obviously. A bit further on to page four, you can see under bus shelters, that's the very late invoice from Westervet Council for the George Lampton Bus Shelter, sorry, Suffolk County Council, the bus shelter that was agreed, I think that was back in summertime. Back on to page five, you've got the annual fee for the Studland street lighting, which was more than we had expected, we have discussed that already, I believe. Does anybody have any questions or anything that I haven't gone through on that report?
No. Councillor Kirby, yes.
Cathy, you know the street lighting in Studlands?
Yes.
Did we ever contact, I know councillor Drummond mentioned it last week when we were back in the, actually in the council offices, about the Suffolk County Council having this system where they're going to change everything to LEDs?
Yes, so I got.
Have we followed up on that?
Sorry, I got in touch with them about that and they have, it was put in that they would get in touch when they were ready to come and meet. And then obviously, things were very wrong, didn't they? So list, when we get back to whatever it's going to be, it'll be something that I'll get back in touch to see. It was so complicated, the different options. I think we decided we wanted a proper meeting face to face to explain it.
Yeah, okay.
But yes, it's on the list, have contacted them and he's acknowledged it.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions on the finances? Okay, thank you very much. All right, let's move on to the Wetherby Crossing. This is going in the way that I think we wanted it to. The town council managed, well, the town council manager and I have spoken to Rachel Wood and town council manager has spoken to Mero Golden and we've all approved really the her charges that came back, I understand it. You just confirmed that, Deborah?
Well, yeah, so councillors were asked by email if they had any objections to proceeding with the barrister preparing the statement of case at the price of £2,000 plus VAT, given that that was above my delegated authority to spend. And the general consensus was that, well, nobody disagreed. But obviously, I'd quite like a resolution now just to confirm the appointment of the barrister and in particular the fees for the statement of case. There are further fees associated with the Wetherby Crossing that will come from the barrister, dependent upon how much, you know, how much we go, sort of going forward, there will be more costs. And that is set out in the, in the email that's attached to the, that's included in the agenda pack. So, you know, the, the other fees are set out, I think for the, this is the suggestion that we ought to see whether there are other authorities would help to contribute towards the cost of the inquiry. But in the meantime, I think we proceed with, I recommend we proceed with the statement of case and agree to appoint the barrister for, to represent us at the inquiry with a view to hopefully achieving funding support from other organisations.
And everyone knows how hugely important this is to our residents. I've not heard of anybody who doesn't want us to do everything we can to keep the Wetherby Crossing open. So I think we're actually very fortunate that this barrister knows the case and has worked on it and will do the statement of case for us at this rate. And also, as usual, we're very fortunate that Rachel Wood is going to help. So shall we all just have a vote to, I'm assuming to approve? But if anybody has any questions, please speak up and ask them.
Yes. Can I say one word, Peter?
Thank you, that looks to be unanimous, yes, go ahead, Peter.
Oh, good. The other thing is, obviously, obviously, we probably hope to be in Hampshire, again, for their support and everything, but also, what if Hampshire be able to also to help us with their funds? Because obviously, a lot of the people that are in the, in the Hampshire area, they do use that crossing, so it would be nice if they would be able to help us out with some funds, obviously, towards it. But if not, I still say we've got to go for this. We've been doing this for near enough four years and then we don't really want to re, we've really got to stick our necks out on this one, we really go for it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And councillor Kirby is waving, yes?
I was just gonna, I'm just waiting for Alabat to come back, but are you happy for me to share those costs? So she's got an idea of what, what is actually costing us and what maybe hap. I don't know how much of that cost we would be looking for them to contribute. Any ideas?
Well, I think, I don't see why we shouldn't ask for half because, well, it's.
Yeah, yeah.
Half of their residents and, you know, you go, you go across the crossing and you're almost directly into East Cambs. So, I mean, I would favour asking for half of them.
Right.
Yeah.
I'll put, I'll put half to her, she might come back with an offer, but we, yeah, hopefully we'll get something.
Does anybody have any other comment?
Peter just wants to say something.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, what I've said, I'd agree. I mean, obviously, as Rachel said, it would be nice if they did pay half because they are on the other half of the railway. So they're one half down below and they're half up at the top then. It would be nice if they would contribute half because it will benefit both of us. Thank you.
Okay, good luck, councillor Kirby. But it is bizarre that we seem to be, you know, having to take the responsibility for the whole lot. So let's hope they will contribute, we'll see. Right, okay, everyone happy with that? Yeah, okay. Item thirteen, appointment to cancel, formally note that the post has been offered and verbally accepted with the start date to be agreed and financial range was offered. So we will go back and talk to her. So that's good news. Fourteen, annual meeting of the town council to determine whether to hold the annual meeting in May or defer until twenty.
Excuse me, mayor?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry to interrupt you, do we need to actually take a formal vote on?
Well, we just says to note, I think, but we can all, we all agreed to, shall we all, are people happy to vote? To accept that? Anybody not happy to vote? Sorry, I was just, it said to note, so I was just noting it, okay, but we voted, thank you.
Thank you, sorry to have interrupted you.
No, no, feel free to interrupt me if I'm, if I need to be interrupted. So fourteen, to determine whether to hold the annual meeting in May or defer until 2021 or such other time. Who'd like to speak on this? And councillor Jeffries.
Hang on, you're muted.
Muted.
I've unmuted you, go on.
And I, I think that we, now that we can hold meetings, I can't think of a reason why we shouldn't hold an annual town meeting as suggested on the eighteenth of May. And I think it'll be good for the council that we go through the normal procedures.
Anybody else like to comment otherwise? Councillor, councillor Drummond and then councillor O'Neill.
Yeah. I, I would prefer, rather than defer it for a whole year or have it this way, that we actually do it when we next meet in person, which hopefully is not going to be too long. It is a civic meeting, it is the exchange of the chain of office and the acceptance of office, which I think would be difficult to do over the internet. And there's normally a token gift to the outgoing mayor. So that's what I think would be a nice way of doing it. Do it when we can next meet and, you know, not put it off to the whole year. It could be a month or two away.
Councillor O'Neill?
Oh, hang on, you're muted, Chris, we can't hear you.
Oh, is that better?
Yeah.
We believe we need to just have that meeting at our next meeting. Carry on as normal, we've got, this system works brilliantly, we can all vote, I think we need to do it. My only question was going to be about that we have to propose and second people, so how do we do that? Can we do that electronically? So if we have to propose someone to be mayor and to be seconded, can that be emailed round? Because previously we've had to have a, have a piece of paper, so you, you sign it and get it, get proposed and seconded. What is the system now?
Well, we can, we can have any system that we want. I mean, we don't actually have to have that kind of a system if we decide it's not appropriate. You could just at the meeting, propose somebody and seconded and you take a vote. Or if you, if you prefer to, we can, we can do it the way you've always, the way you've done it previously, where you would just electronically submit your, I mean, did you do that at the meeting?
Yeah, could I suggest that what could be done is that the town council manager could email round the form that we usually sign that, and so if you email a copy of that form to everybody, anybody who wants to propose somebody can then send it back with proposer and seconder or whatever. I mean, there is a very simple form, councillor Jeffries or councillor Drummond, there's some simple form, I seem to recall.
The form merely says nominations for town mayor and deputy town mayor, proposer, seconder.
Yeah.
That's all the form said.
So if everybody gets one of those forms, they can send it in. I mean, so, so I think that's pretty easy to sort out. I'm not sure quite how I will hand this over, but it'll have to come subsequently. So, but I, I think that, I mean, I think probably I'm very happy to to hand on, so, you know, we don't actually know when we're going to have the next meeting.
Councillor O'Neill would like to speak.
I was just going to propose that we, we do that, that we hold an election. Our next meeting is the meeting of the town where we elect a new mayor.
I'd just point out, Chris, that that's scheduled for the eighteenth of May, not the meeting.
Yeah, for the eighteenth of May, I'd propose that.
Okay, so we need a seconder for that and then everyone needs to vote.
Not second.
Okay, so everybody, all those in favour?
Yes.
Okay.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
I'm voting for that.
Nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, I think, yes, I think that's unanimous.
Fine, okay, moving on to meeting schedule. So can everybody have a look at that so we can see how that works? Revised meeting schedule.
So with, with the meeting schedule, I've just proposed that full council meets every other week, alternating with planning and development, sorry, development and planning. Obviously, this, this, the, the meeting that we had of planning tonight should have been last week, but it was deferred till tonight. So the suggestion is that next week, on the twenty-seventh, we have a planning meeting and then on the fourth, we have a town council and then alternating between the two of those. And I've just gone to the end of June for now with a proposed schedule.
Okay, well, we might be opened up by the end of June and naturally be able to meet again. Although if we have some people who have to isolate, we may have to, is there some way that we can have these Zoom meetings as well as, so to take, to take everybody into consideration? As well as, we need to look into it. When we get to the point where we can meet again, we may have one or two members of the town council who are still in isolation in some way. So we may have a combination of meeting in person and meeting through Zoom. But I'm sure we'll be able to manage that. Okay, committee memberships, they're all here. Anybody not on a committee or whatever? These will all change anyway. Okay, thank you. So we need to approve those, so I'm happy to propose those, everybody, any, a seconder? Do we have a seconder? Yeah. Councillor Kirby, oh, cool. Okay, all those in favour of those memberships?
Yes.
Anybody not in favour? Okay, that's fine, thank you. Item seventeen, meeting agenda priorities. I've been through this with the town council, acting town council manager and it seems eminently sensible. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to add? No, okay, so those are our priorities. Could we put this on the agenda, Deborah, so that if we do need to add to it, we can look at it every month?
Okay.
Sorry, can I just raise a point going back to the committee memberships?
Oh, you've missed the boat, but I suppose we'll allow you.
My, my name isn't on them, on any of them.
Oh, isn't it?
You've really missed the boat.
I did volunteer, honest.
You got away lively. I, I am really sorry, Ian, I honestly thought that I'd added your name, so.
It's a bastardly thought.
Deborah understands.
Well, could you, yeah.
Okay, I will, I will amend the committee membership to include you, Ian.
Yeah, apologies, chairman.
We're just checking you were paying attention and you weren't. You are now.
Yes, I am now.
Just show, show. Okay, fine, and so just eighteen correspondence, the report, apparently there being a spate of burglaries in Stables as well. Anybody have anything they'd like to say about this? No, well, that's just for noting. Deborah, is there any more correspondence?
No, none that I'm aware of.
Okay, fine, and then so the next town council meeting is the sixth of May, did we say?
No, Monday the fourth of May.
Monday the fourth of May. Okay.
It's at six PM.
At six PM.
May the force be with you.
And I'd just like to thank everybody who's doing such a great job on the helpline or as volunteers or as the coordinators. And I'd like to thank, again, you next, the Redman Trust and various people who've contributed money. And councillor Yarrow would like to speak.
Right, just an observation, we seem to only have our rotor up to today, Deborah, I don't know, has it gone out already?
No, that was one of the conversations I meant to have with Cathy this afternoon.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll, we'll get, we'll get to that before the end of the day. Does anybody, is everybody happy with their current shifts? Anybody want to particularly change or need a break or?
No, fine, as and when for me.
All good.
Okay, excellent.
We'll be, we'll get that, will we, for, we'll continue doing what we did today?
Yeah, well, we'll send out a confirmed rotor in the next hour or so.
Okay, great, all right. Thank you very much, everybody, and look forward to seeing you on the fourth. Thank you.
Thank you, bye.
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 Thank you very much, everybody.
Yeah, thank you, Peter.
All right, we're finished now, is there anything?
Yes, yeah, it's finished, I'm ending.
Okay, let's see. Thank you for everybody and everything for helping me out also, all right?